Welcome everyone to our workshop. I have a short agenda, but we'll race through that. Hopefully it's short, whatever you say that. First was a vending request from a street performer to perform acoustic music during daylight hours on Main Street. We went through similar requests last year, two years ago, with a person down at the river. A little bit different, but basically the same. Our code doesn't allow this type of performance for reasons, I guess, you know, just music, individual preferences, having music that maybe someone likes, others don't like. So I'll open it for discussion. I'm not willing to allow it because I think that, you know, the code is written for a reason and we did go through this whole process a few years ago and denied that person. So, any other comments from people? Lynn?
Well, I just feel that it's not really vending, it's busking.
It's what?
It's busking, it's not vending. Vending implies that you're giving some kind of, you know, like an ice cream cart. You give them money, you get ice cream.
The coach says no instruments, music.
Right.
Okay, I mean, that's okay. I mean, but go ahead.
Well, I was just thinking of the part that I had read about on the waterfront, that there's no busking or performance or peddling or anything like that of any sort down there. So.
I can, I've got the chapter on voices and I, if I look for the, well, chapter, where it is, I lose my space here, but basically says, "which will be an awful operator playing radio, television, audio tape, or CD player, phonograph, musical instrument, loudspeaker, sound amplifying equipment, or similar device on a public right of way in a public park, or from a motor vehicle which produces or reproduces sound in a manner as to reclaim the audible at a distance of seven and five tenths meters," which is 25 feet. So that's basically what it says. I don't think Main Street is a good place to have somebody playing music. And he specifically says during daylight hours with the goal of earning money from passersby. So he's basically panhandling, maybe that's the wrong term for it. And I'm not sure that that's...
A dated term.
Yeah, I will date myself, I'm gonna tell you.
I don't know. Steve?
I don't know. Like, what if someone that lives on Main Street was sitting out in front of their house playing their guitar? That would be different than someone sitting there in the middle of the sidewalk playing and asking for money. So I don't know if we have room for that really on Main Street. I don't think it's a great idea. Could he set it to train station?
We'd be up to Metro North.
I mean, I can certainly understand it if it's on, you know, as part of, you know, the July 4th celebration or something like that and we're doing a sidewalk sale or...
Oh, yeah.
You know, as part of a particular community event.
Right.
You know, I don't have a problem with it then, but just kind of willy-nilly, anytime, it doesn't seem right to me.
Well, it's not going to be one guy either, because once he does it, then we have 14 people on Main Street performing. I guess that's when it gets more problematic.
Okay, so I think I've heard enough. So, motion to, I guess, deny or approve, I guess?
Denied the request.
Motion to deny the request for street performer.
I'll second that.
All in favor of denial?
Yes.
Aye. So Tom, just to keep checking in with you, you got that thing? Okay. Next is a request from Fire Department for the Junior Fire Academy Parade. It is a short parade, it's on a Friday night between 5:00 and 6:00, July 28th. They march from High Street to Mayor's Park. The only question I was like, see if they, I wish Steve was here, just ask him if they help crowd control or cut off streets, or I don't know what they have to do.
He said in his letter, which is from the back of that, that he was going to, or assert some ways, "I'll be in contact with both Fire Department in the near future to help coordinate the plans." It sounds like they're going from High Street down there and across.
Right.
So I guess he was going to...
I think they've done it before, but he said they did it on the street, on the sidewalks?
Yeah, this is, I guess it's their 15th anniversary, so this is new.
What's that?
This is new. They've never done, you know, they march the kids around the building, but never parade.
I thought he said they had one all the time. Okay, regardless, I don't have any problem with it as long as they coordinate with the officer in charge.
He says he will.
He says he will.
In his letter.
Yeah, I know. A lot of people say that, we get into trouble, they say they will. But anyway, I'm fine. Any other discussion on, all in favor of approving the parade as specified here?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
You second?
Yeah.
Okay. Appointment of Independence Day Committee, there is one, Charlie Eustace is not, from what I understand, is not showed up for any or many of the meetings.
Any.
Any of the meetings, so I would, I'll make the motion to appoint the Independent State Committee once again with all the members, with the exception of Charlie Eustace.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We also, we have to put a, let's put an ad in the paper for the committee.
For another member.
For one more member, or at least one more member.
Two, three, four, five, they can do all five?
They could, I mean, we could vote out there if someone wants to join. I'm sure they could use whatever help they can.
You can snap the arms for Mike to do it.
Okay. In old business, there was, you know, I've talked to Elliot Hammond and Carolyn, I don't know what her last name is.
Mrs. Garland, H.J. Garland, yeah.
There was a proposal for a bronze pizza sculpture which was done. I don't think anyone here has seen it until recently. It's about two and a half inches, I think, high, so it poses a trip hazard, so initially it was supposed to go in the sidewalk, so we're not going to allow that, which I've told them, you know, it's impossible to put this in the sidewalk without, you know, someone probably tripping on it. So we were talking about putting it in the tree bed in front of the pizza place, so I'm going to be talking to Jen tomorrow, Jen's work, and we can see if that's possible to do that. The other thing they were asking for was a bench with a plaque, as they are, you know, commemorative plaques, the other benches have many of them, but I don't think it can go in front of the pizza place, so if everybody wants to take a look at that, I don't see that it can go there. They can, it can go up, there's one in front of Silver Spoon where I think they could do it, but right in front of the pizza place, there's the hydrant, and then there's the space, and the sign, then there's the garbage cans, then there's the tree bed, so, and it's a 15-minute stop, so.
Interestingly with the plaque is there's nothing on it that says that it can erase a chop.
Yeah.
It's a piece, it slices a pizza, no wording on it whatsoever, so I don't know what they were thinking of what their plans are, or if the bench was going to somehow connect to the plaque.
Right, yeah.
But there's nothing in there that even shows what that pizza slice is for, which is sort of a shame after we did all the work.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't show what...
If anyone would like to see, we have it at the office.
Oh, we do have it.
They say they want a plaque on the bench.
Yes, it's small.
Are they going to provide that?
Yes, yes, and purchase it, you know, usually I guess it's a $500 contribution or donation, which they've agreed to.
Okay.
I guess they...
Comes under rec, I think, which is the handle.
Which I can correct this back to, but I just want, if anyone feels differently about that the bench can't go there, let me know.
No, I looked the other day, there's like, it's not space.
Doesn't seem like a good space. Okay. We'll be taking on, according to our code, we should have been doing the docking all along. Somehow went to rec, maybe they at one time thought they could handle it. I've talked to some of the members and they didn't see why they were dealing with it, so we'll take that responsibility back. It comes to us and then after they get it, and so ultimately, we're doing the same thing they're doing, or we're duplicating services. So, anyway, we have, so we'll be taking on docking from now on directly to us. There is an application for the Clearwater, it's an educational program, May 13th, it's just for an hour, that's next Saturday, and then July 24th to the 25th, that's Monday, Tuesday. Usually we waive the fees for non-for-profits.
This is an old contract.
Yeah, I didn't look at the contract.
Yeah, because it's got the old...
Yeah.
But I just don't remember if the right... We should be sure that we have the correct contract written in. So this will need to be redone.
Right. Okay, so we'll send, I think all of it applies except for the two-foot.
Yep.
Okay. I guess I'll make a motion to approve this application for the dates requested.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the fee.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you know they're coming in the 24th, 25th, that they're going to have people on board, that they're going to sleep on board, that they can't come though?
I don't know, I don't think they've come before, but we should find that out, I can ask.
Someone came in last year and they can't adopt some.
Right, yeah.
Those houses, something like that.
Good. Okay, fireworks contract, I don't know if we announced this or not, but the Grumbridge Games has generously offered to sponsor the fireworks once again.
For a date this week.
Fourth of July, that's what we're gonna do.
Is it what we're gonna do?
We can have that discussion now, but we, through conversation, we'll discuss it then. Anyway, we had talked about having it either the weekend before.
Right.
Or the weekend after.
Right.
And then it was like, why not just have it on the 4th?
What was the 4th issue? So Tuesday or was it Tuesday?
Yes, it's a Tuesday.
Tuesday. I thought we had agreed on the first, but I thought they weren't available.
We asked, no, we asked, see, what we did was asked about Saturdays.
Right.
So they talked to Saturdays, both Saturdays were available. One, if we wanted to barge on the 8th, we couldn't have that. So if we do want to do the barge, it's another discussion, that would have to be on the weekend before.
Right.
So then I asked Jeff if we, if he had asked him for other dates, like the 4th itself, and he had, so he called them back and they said it was available, so.
So the barge is available on the 4th?
And it's also available, but this is just for the fireworks, this contract. So, does anyone have a problem with the 4th, or do you think the 4th is not a good day? We can contact them again, the other days are still open.
I like the, I like the 4th. And I prefer the weekend.
Okay, and Lynn?
I thought I'd agree with Fran. I don't like the idea of moving our Independence Day celebration to convenience, you know, to the convenience of the weekend. I mean, it's the birthday of our nation. We don't move Christmas, you know, we don't move Thanksgiving for everybody's convenience, it's on Thursday, so why not the 4th of July? It's our nation's most important holiday.
I agree with Lynn. Okay. So I guess I'll take, I'll make a motion to hold the fireworks display and parade, if we have a parade, or the community events that day on the 4th of July.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Yes, me.
So forward, forward one. Okay, next ques, well, we can answer the barge next. So the fireworks display, as I said, was being provided by Grumbridge Games once again, the same amount as last year, $9,000. They are considering paying for a barge, but it is a lot to ask, I think, but they are considering, haven't gotten back to me. So for now, what we need is a motion to accept, or to approve, the contract with Legion Fireworks in the amount of $9,000.
I'll second that. I'll move that, so move.
Second?
Second.
Second from Fran, discussion?
Discussion. The invoice, I believe the balance due, if it's $9,000 fireworks and it's 1350 deposit, the balance due should not be $9,000.
Right.
It should be 7650. Is it a rain day, were they, did they rain that much?
They don't, good question. I'm gonna have to ask it.
Just point if we have it on the 4th, they can say on a rain day we'll do the 8th.
That is difficult to do at this.
Is it a cloud holiday, is it actually a work, is it always like a work? Yes.
I just asked it because you know it's on, it's Tuesday, right?
Yeah, but it, no, this is one of the holidays that doesn't move. One of the few that doesn't move.
Although they did move it last year.
Well, we moved the parade, but the holiday itself is officially...
We had the fireworks.
Right, and we moved the whole celebration. We moved the whole celebration.
Yeah.
But the holiday itself stays on the 4th.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Well, we just had a motion to accept this contract and, by Lynn and Fran seconded, and we went to discussion to accept this contract.
Yeah, I thought we were on rain day.
Well, we didn't, we didn't vote on this yet. So is there any further discussion on the contract?
Do they provide the barge or whatever?
That's not included in this.
Do they provide it?
I'm not sure if they provide it or...
We have to get it somewhere else.
They have to coordinate with the...
Barge people.
Yes. And the Coast Guard also.
Because last year there was no barge, right?
Yes, and so far they should have.
They lit some trees up a little bit, or something, can't close.
I mean, if they issue of looking at a rain day, we may speak for a fact.
All right, so you want to vote on it?
Yeah, let's hope.
Just leave a point, just go it in.
All right, we'll vote, I don't know when they need it enough, so I will...
Okay, so I don't understand in the contract, what that says, "in the event a rain day is declined by the sponsor, at the time of the signing of this agreement, the agreement, the sponsor agrees to pay Legion a cancellation fee amounting to 50% of the displayed rest stated below." Oh, okay, so if we don't identify a rain day and it gets rained out, we still have to pay them 50% of the $9,000. Okay, now I understand that.
So we need to put a rain day into it, we need to maybe reconsider July 4th, either it's going to be July 4th or the rain day of the 8th, or we're going to have it on the 2nd, the rain day of the 3rd or the 4th, or the 1st and whatever the half being there.
Okay, find out tomorrow, table.
Yeah, the fair about the rain day is that you don't make the call until the morning of, and by that time, anybody who's doing any vending has already ordered the food, and by the time the rain day comes, the food may or may not still be good.
But if we had it on a Sunday, the same thing would happen.
Yeah, we've never done, we've never, to the best of my knowledge, we've never exercised a rain day. They don't set off the fireworks in the rain, they only don't do the fireworks when it's a torrential downpour.
I think we did 2010, because I remember 2010, it was torrential rain on the floor.
I don't remember, I don't remember that happening. It may have.
Last year we had the celebration on Sunday, but rain day was probably Monday, which was the official holiday, so you have that connection.
All right, let's move on, or if you want, we can discuss this. Okay, next is, consider next steps for the photograph permit application.
Jeff, the one that's stapled to the agenda packet is actually an earlier version, and the one that Jeff printed out and has paper clipped in front of you includes some feedback that I got from Marie today about, about what it costs or the revenue that's generated by our, the revenue that's generated on a daily basis by the Fair Street parking lot. And if film crews want to use it, we should charge them a fee, of course, and, you know, I was just asking how much that should be. And I just put in here a range of 300 to 500 a day. Marie felt the 500 was too much. 300 covers the revenue that we generally garner on a weekday.
What I said was 500 is reasonable for a weekend day.
For a weekend day, I said.
300 is reasonable for a weekday, I didn't, I thought 500 was really much.
Okay. All right, so how does everybody feel about changing that from, you know, in the third paragraph on the instructions, that 300 for a weekday and 500 for a weekend day?
If we're going to offer the Minnesota parking lot, it needs to be at least a couple weeks' notice.
Yes. I'll include that too. We need, what, 14 days' notice? Actually.
I don't know, what would we do with the notice?
What do we do with the notice? Well, we have to post it at the parking lot saying that this parking lot will not be available on such and such a day.
Yeah.
For people to plan up there. But I would give them at least...
For regular parking.
We have something for two weeks, we'll be lucky if we get a notice in one week, so we should like to go.
I mean, we probably won't put a sign up until the day of.
No, I'd put a sign up a couple of days ahead of time, for some people just, you know, you're running to work in the morning, 5 o'clock in the morning, you're running to that station. I know that, but yeah, but you know what? If you're running to work at 5 o'clock in the morning and you're expected to park there in the Civil Park, you can't, you need to know that while it's there.
What's gonna happen if we don't have anybody guarding the area?
Well, I would assume if so many contracts for that lot, we're gonna have to block it off. The day that our contract, we're gonna have to come to block lots and people...
Well, that, and film crews are usually there by 5:00 in the morning anyway.
So we would have to block it.
Trucks arrive early. It's their responsibility, not ours, to block it.
I'm sorry, that's all, okay, I mean, if they're renting...
But the fact of notifying those who use it on a regular basis that...
I think we should notify the public.
Yes.
Put a notice up, you know, a couple of days.
You know, we can do a Facebook post, we can do...
Signs of the lot, basically.
You know, put a sign on the meter, letting folks know that it'll be closed that particular day.
I agree, okay, so moving ahead, was there others?
Oh, and the other change I made on the fee schedule was, I turned it from cast, from crew size to cast and crew size, and also under commercial film or video production on public property, I changed cast and crew size three to five people, and I'm X-ing out more fewer. Oh, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought.
Do we have to be taking out more fewer here?
Yeah, we're taking out, we're taking out more fewer, and I drew it from three to five people so that there's not confusion between small photo, video, or film shoot, which is one to two cast and crew, so this is like three to five people. And then, I've been going round and round in my head about the nonprofits and PSA productions because there are nonprofits like local animal, you know, like animal sanctuaries and stuff like that, who might want to film something. But also, the NFL is a nonprofit, so why should, if the NFL or the NHL or any of these large organizations that can clearly afford to pay a crew to do their advert, to shoot their advertising and promotional videos, why should they only have to pay $100 instead of a regular commercial day?
How do you determine that?
I don't know. That's why I wanted to ask your opinion about it.
You can put it as approved or something, that's true.
In the application and processing fee, you have a waiver for undergrad students, film projects. Can we, can we just take out the nonprofit and just say...
You want to just take that out altogether? Take that whole section of the fee schedule?
And then just put a note that, you know, please maybe waive for certain, certain types of...
Certain types of nonprofits.
Based on, based on the void approval or something to that effect.
I think we should run that by John.
By John, okay.
I mean, if we're gonna ask, you know, if it's gonna be arbitrary and it's up to us like to say, okay, nonprofit, you can, you can, I think we should have something to stand on, some solid ground. So if you'd like to call John, you could ask him just if we can, if there's a way to do that.
So something like fee maybe waived for certain nonprofits or charitable organizations?
Right, it could be at the discretion of the board, but I don't know if you get into trouble by saying that.
Okay, well, I'll ask him.
Also, for the, for the small photo shoots, I just think we shouldn't have one for $20. I just think if someone's gonna come down on the street and they don't even know about it and they're gonna film or something and there's two people with a camera, I don't know, I don't think, I think it's too much. Not too much money, I think, it's a lot that, I mean, if somebody's just gonna go down, I see people all the time with a little camera with, you know, filming their friends or whatever, are they gonna somehow be pulled over and...
Well, enforcement of that is also potentially impossible.
I just don't think that they're gonna come here either. I think commercial people who want to film and they're gonna use space, they're gonna, I don't think small people, two people are gonna come here and ask permission or fill out an application, so.
Okay, well, I'll just take that.
I mean, if everyone agrees, I...
It's fine with me.
Okay, I would take that. Is that it?
So what's the next steps, does this go to John then, over you?
TK is still in here.
I just left that there to, for tonight's discussion, just to see.
It's in multiple places.
Where are they?
It's in the third, it's in the third paragraph, TK is twice, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, it's in, and TK is there once, and...
Okay, so there was about, in the graph, TK is in there. Yeah, page 7, I just wasn't sure whether it was gonna wind up on page 7, that's why I put TK up there.
And...
And also on the completed permit application, page 4.
So there's an asterisk on the application, I was trying to figure out what it applied to. It apparently applies to the previous explosive, explosive spires hazardous materials. You might want to put an asterisk there.
Oh, right here.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
It's just, I was trying to figure out what it applied to.
Yeah. Okay.
So I guess clean this up, clean this up, Ash, done, and then we'll have a final draft, I think.
Final answer? Okay.
If you can get something, yeah.
Hopefully, you know...
Now, if this goes into our code and we have to have a public hearing?
Yes, if it goes into our code.
So we have to...
But I'm not sure it needs to go into our code.
This?
Yes.
Why would this go into our code?
For the fees, the fees for votes, not for the law.
No, that's why I say it's not included, it needs to go into our code. It's not, it's not on the law.
Right.
Application.
Shall I ask John if it needs to be part of it?
No, I guess it's, it's a secret, so I agree. Forget to leave that for you next week or send it back to everyone before then.
Okay.
Or leave it in my hair.
So I have to
No more words, though, they're all, no more words.
Okay, next we have a number of sale of village properties to discuss. First one is the barber and brewer just down the street. Owner is here.
Yeah.
Sixty-nine seventy-one. It's a street stoop in front of their business, which is owned by the village. And they're requesting to either buy or, and or to refurbish and to also add a rail.
Yeah, and I guess based on whatever is decided, the liability certification, what do you know?
So I guess to start off, I mean, I personally, I mean, I, I'm not in favor of selling. I just think that some of the stoops, and I think we should, we should actually have a dining code. I think that there's a number of buildings that are using, using our properties, the stoops that are our properties, and I think we should have a code that actually addresses that and that works with the, with the owners. I have no problem with allowing anyone to fix up, you know, as long as it goes through the proper channels, as far as it goes through HCRB or whatever, if they wanna put a rail up. If you're just, if you're just repairing in kind, then I don't think you need a permit.
Right.
So if you're adding a rail, I think you would, so I think it would, depending on if everyone, if people wanna sell, my, my personal preference is not to sell, not to disappoint.
One question about, how is the liability managed? With, I mean, this is a step down, so what happens if somebody falls?
Right now it's
If I don't fix it?
If you don't fix it, yeah, right now it's, the village is property, it's our liability.
Although they would probably sue you and the village.
Yeah.
Like, that's what's happened in the past. I, I on the other hand would be in favor of selling.
So what, yeah, why would you not want all of that on you?
Well, because I believe that there's like so many of these stoops where people are using them and in other, in other villages like Carytown or whatever, they actually, every year, there's an application and a permit given, you know, that the, like you're saying, who's liable for it? Well, you would have to have insurance for that stoop if you wanna use the stoop for dining.
What if they don't wanna use the stoop for dining? They just wanna use the stoop for entrance and exit from the place of business? We still have the liability issue. Why not sell it and get rid of the liability issue?
Because I believe people all wanna put tables there and I believe all people wanna use this for dining.
Well, if it's not a dining stoop, what if it's a, Old Souls, that's a retail stoop?
Okay, well, I'm not in favor, whatever Steve, opinion on?
Well, I think if we permitted use, then we could I think the village stands to make more money off permitting it every year rather than selling it. And if your business, I'm sure is gonna be there for a thousand years, but other businesses that don't work out, we really have no say on what happens with the stoop in the future if we sell it off. Do you know what I mean? But we're giving it up.
Right.
And that might be a mistake, so I think it might be better to consider renting them or permitting them, as long as the usage fits in with the building code.
If we rent it, then we assume total liability.
We have that now.
People will sue both now, which is what has happened.
But it'll fall on us. It'll fall on us because it's our property.
Yeah.
Unless they put something in the way.
But why not sell it and get rid of that for us all?
I think that
I understand what you're saying.
You're locked into it that way.
If you wish to, if you wish to institute an outdoor dining, an outdoor dining code change, you can do that whether it's public or private property, I believe. If, if, it also goes to the, outdoor dining goes to the parking waiver question as well. If you permit outdoor dining, whether it's public or private, there's the question of the parking waiver. Does that factor into what, what the business has to pay for? But it just seems to me that permitting someone to put up a railing on our property is again another certainly I understand why one would wanna do that, to prevent people from falling off the stoop, but
Well, there's a particular, because one side is an inch high and the other side's over a foot high.
I understand.
You know, there's definitely
That's the same in a number of properties, Bob McCaffrey, it's just the same.
But when they
The whole street goes downhill.
As we all know, when the ADA comes along, it's our cost to, to make it compliant. And that, that wipes out whatever you, you gain.
I have always been of the opinion, I believe, is that, that I'd rather get rid of it, get rid of the liabilities. And, you know, if we start, and I, I also understand where you're coming from. And also the fact that every year we need to get insurance, copies of insurance policies from everyone who has anything on the outside of your property. And tracking that down every year is a real pain in the neck. What do you know? If it was a case of, well, you can't have your permit to put anything out there until you get your insurance policy, and if you're serving what they're out there, then you have to give us double insurance policy. And without that, you can't get a permit. It would sort of be easier for us to control that. So if we own property and we permitted it for use, it'd be easier for us on that side, however, I'm not sure in the long run whether it's just easier to get rid of all the liabilities for as many people who own buildings from stoops that I would rather not have to worry about. And, you know, being honest, if I were a damn building owner and the village owned the stoop, I would say, oh, you fix it. You know, I appreciate the fact that the building owners wanna fix them, but I wouldn't be so willing to do that. You know, if it's cracked and it's broken and it's not your building, you know, we have to give, we should, we should help the building. Sorry, just back and forth.
Was there a point when the village built everybody's stoops? I mean, or is it just on the property and the building owners did it?
We'd probably have to go back a hundred years to find out.
Well, no, a lot of those stoops are not a hundred years old. They're just, you know, built in the last fifty years, forty years, and fallen apart concrete. But I don't know if
I, that one
Who owns that?
That one, that one is, that one has been a barber shop when I was a kid, so it predates.
Right.
I being forty years of age, it was only thirty years ago when that was a barber shop.
Right, but that stoop is not from when that building was built. It's been changed all the time.
It may already, it's not a question, what we're discussing is policy, not your particular application.
But you have to sit through it anyway.
This is a painless meeting. I've been through work for so
Didn't, didn't we just sell something to somebody?
Well, James.
I'd prefer different situations.
Because I wasn't a student. He made grass, he grew grass, and now McCaffrey asked to buy it.
Jimmy asked to buy it.
And I'm sure, I'm sure McCaffrey doesn't wanna look good.
Right, and, right, because he and Willie Stone's building. And Gil Hanna's
I'm thinking about the ADA responsibility. Now, you own, do you own the building next to that also? Because the building next to that stoop does not belong to the village.
Sixty-five, or flipping?
They own, yeah, they have their own room.
Yeah, that's like a staircase.
Yeah.
Can I see that?
Sure. And this is a copy of Terrace District Public Property. So six, but now I don't know whether he killed, bought that from the village a while ago. So, you know, the property lines in Main Street are really mishmash, some of it we own, some of it we don't.
Lynn, your feelings?
My feelings are, I would like to see some kind of consistency. I would also like, I would also like there to be some kind of consistent policy regarding stuff that goes out on the sidewalk and stoops and, and enforcement of the insurance, the insurance waivers that we request from people. You know, I think it's not unreasonable to ask for a nominal permit fee to put that in.
If you're gonna put the permit fee for what?
To put stuff out on the sidewalk and on Village End Farm.
But what about, what about we sell the stoops?
Well, there'll still have to be rules on what people can put out there.
Yeah, they have to be rules on what and how far out they can go.
Yes.
And then you have places like, for example, the Foundry, who doesn't have a stoop, but he puts tables out, and that's, you can't sell him a piece of the sidewalk.
Right. Well, no, you know, I would just like to see, you know, like, we're not selling the sidewalk, but I would like to just see some kind of yearly permit. I mean, and, but something affordable, not, not to gouge merchants or anything like that, because I would be paying it too.
So can we see that, see, like, just hold on this for a week and see if we can, if we can actually collect, you know, if we can have a din, outdoor dining where we can charge, still charge merchants for outdoor dining, even if it's on their property?
At this point, can I
I mean, if they can, if we can, and we charge a small fee, like fifty bucks or something like that a year?
Well, it wouldn't be dining in their case, it's not a restaurant, but someday someone may open a restaurant.
And also if they, any permit to put out even a sandwich bar.
Yes.
Now, and before we go to environmental situation, because I know they wanna move on this, can we just approve that she repair the stoop, which belongs to us, and have her move on to build for a permit in life in the real?
I'm sorry, do you own the building?
Yes. She wants to repair the stoop, what she can do, you know, belongs to us, is what we set up here. Repair it kind.
I'm totally in favor of that.
Well, we would have to, we would have to probably generate some sort of, of waiver for, to permit of a period of our building, to our, to our structure.
Yeah, I was asking Jeff today, before I sent you the email, I was trying to check with everybody that I thought would know basis was we have to give you some kind of authority to repair the stoop that belongs to us. Or a waiver, which I guess we could do with a, just a letter, a written letter.
Yeah, just a letter to Bill Bejarski and others. That we, we waive any, we approve your plan to repair the stoop.
Now, do you
If you could wait till next Tuesday, then we can give you a definitive answer. If not, if you wanna move on that right now, we can, we can just talk to the building sector and you can repair the stoop.
I mean, I would prefer to know the future of the intent before we get into any sort of, you know, whatever needs to be taken off or, and then rebuilt. Just to understand if, if I'm owning it and then I will then have future control over its look and use is gonna be different than if the village owns it. So I probably, you know, I definitely, Fran, appreciate you trying to get a decision today, but in this case, it might make sense to wait until I can get a fresher answer, only because I'm probably not gonna do much while it's, when it's up in the air.
Just, just about why, you probably won't, you know, if you own the building, it's probably not gonna make a difference in terms of you having control over what looks like, because HCRB is gonna tell you what, what they want it to look like.
Yeah, that, I mean, that I understand, but I mean, as far as the, we might use a different material, but that's just for instance.
Okay, I made it, yeah, okay, if you're, if you're good to wait, we'll do what we can.
We can definitely figure it out.
But I would just like to say, as far as, you know, consistency and clarity, it's really confusing. And it makes it difficult to keep things moving when there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of expenses. And if there is any, is there any code that can be, that I can read or understand about? Is there anything written about?
As far as the stoops go?
Yeah.
No.
There's nothing in writing this.
It's village property, we can sell it at our discretion.
As far as what you can do with it, it's, you know, historical. I was trying, I was trying to get you some sort of, at least a series of things.
Yeah, which I understand that, because we've done a lot with instructions to buildings. But it, for me, it would just be more an understanding of, I mean, we are dealing with a very large insurance policy because it's, we have a bar. And I own the building, so I'm paying a lot of insurance because I own a building with a bar in it. So I, just to understand the stoop and how it relates to liability and work on the stoop and all of that, I'd like to just kind of become a little bit more proficient in understanding who does what and what happens. Does everybody just point a finger if somebody falls? Or is it 'cause I served them a beer? You know, so it's not, not clear and there's no consistent past.
I think if someone, I think it's definitely our responsibility right now, if someone trips there, that's gonna come to us. But like Marie says, they'll probably go after you, if they're coming out of your, out of your business, they will definitely come to you. I mean, but if someone's walking, if there's tourists walking and they go on your stoop and fall off, I mean, I, we're definitely liable.
Just to keep in the back of your head, and I, I have no idea how this would work, but you may have to put some ADA accessibility in if you're gonna work on that stoop.
It's not possible with that building.
Yeah, I don't know how, unless, you know, a portable ramp would be
But the doorway is
Doorway's too narrow.
Can't fit to the wheelchair. It's five inches too small. And it's, the doorway is held up by the structure of the building, so you have to rebuild You have to rebuild the entire front of that building to make the ADA. You'd have to pull out all that historical woodwork there and start
That applies to a lot of buildings, some
Most of them, any, any building that has those two columns on either side of the front door, same problem.
Yeah, we got it.
Because the door is actually attached to the structural column with nothing.
So if you could wait till Tuesday, it'd be great. We'll find that out and move along with that.
And what, can you just clarify what we're finding out between now and Tuesday?
I'm going to find out if we sell the stoop to you and you or future owners wanna use that for, for sales of some kind of tables for dining, whether or not we'd still, you know, if we issued permits, if we, I wanna, we don't have a code for anything right now, as far as Main Street's go.
Okay.
So I wanted to, you know, I wanna look at being able to, you know, have a fee for outdoor dining. So if we're not allowed to because you own it, then I would think twice about selling it.
But even though I might not use it for dining, I mean, what, I guess my stoop is starting seeming to become an example now that I'm, now a little confused about.
Well, in the future, when you're no longer on it, maybe the, maybe the ownership of the stoop is not transferred by the new owners. Maybe when they buy the building, they don't get the stoop or something, and then we maintain
Or maybe you end up wanting after a couple of years, wanna have a little table out there and people can bring a beer out there.
That maybe, is that against the ABC laws?
I don't think so.
That they can take
Beer outside.
I don't know.
They do it at two, three places.
I don't know what the laws are, I mean, that's not necessarily the intent. I mean, we want a nice looking, I mean, we, we want the building to look nice, we want the stoop to be safe, we wanna present something appealing. And we want a railing for protection and to kind of like make it like, this is the stoop and then this is the sidewalk. But it may be a bench for people just to sit while they're waiting for a haircut. It might be a place just to sit if you're the barber and you're, I don't want anybody smoking there. But if you're the, sorry, Steve. If you're the barber and you're like, you know, sitting there, it's, it's more of like
Social?
Yeah, social, you know, kind of maybe blood checkerboard or something like that, it's not specific to dining. And I feel like perhaps if this was Old Souls here asking this question, it was owned by me, but it had nothing to do with tables on the stoop, that it might be a different conversation.
You know, probably not, because we're looking at, we've been approached by a couple of other businesses to, to sell, you know, for them to buy their stoops. And this has sort of been in the back of our minds for a while, so now that we're at a
Only one of them's a restaurant.
Now, that we're at a point where you specifically need an answer right now, so we're pushing ahead with something that we've been talking about for a while. And whether it was Old Souls or whether it's you, it's basically about the sale of the stoop.
Okay.
To find out what we wanna do with the stoops, because, you know, whether it's you or whether it's Old Souls, you know, that business who's in there now may not be in there five years from now, somebody else may be in. Or we want, we'll control the stoops, or we don't want control of the stoops. So we have to sort of get that through.
Your question just leads to more questions that, that we've been kind of mulling over for quite a while that, you know, that really do need to be answered, you know, like, how do we use this public space in part of thoroughfare? You know, and how do we keep visitors and pedestrians safe? And, you know, what mechanisms do we use to get to that end? You know, and so while it seems, while this particular instance seems really simple, you know, it opens the discussion up to broader issues that really do need to be addressed.
That's a complicated story.
Yeah, so that merchants are Yeah, so that merchants are treated equitably and, and also, you know, the public is kept safe.
There's no consist, consistency at this point. We're trying to create that, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I would just appreciate if leading this, if it was understood that our main intent is for it to look nice and to be safe. It's not to, I don't even know if outdoor doors are allowed outside, and it would be clearly just our intent, it would just be.
I think we just mentioned that, I mentioned this as a hypothetical.
Yeah, it's not, that it's not our necessary end goal, it's just to look nice.
I think anything can happen and owners will change and, that's it.
Well, people, people in Silverstone drink out on the sidewalk. They're sitting there eating lunch, having a beer or whatever, I mean, there's no reason, if you were allowed to use that stoop, that you couldn't do that too, whether you wanted to do it or not. Like, your, your specific plans aren't really what we're concerned about necessarily, is how we go about.
The general.
We do, we have three other people that have asked, probably for a year now, that have asked, that like, that they said one is a restaurant, the other is.
A Realtor.
A Realtor.
Clock shop, right?
I think sixty-six, Studio sixty-six or whatever, right down here. Gallery sixty-six, there. So, so maybe this will be, this will open it up to find out. That's my only concern, like I, like Marie said, of like, why would you otherwise want to liability, so.
Thank you.
We'll have an answer for you, definitely.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think I can come next Tuesday. If not, I'll send somebody.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch in a minute, thanks.
Okay, next, this just came to us this week, so I'm not really, I mean, we can, we can discuss it a little bit. I'm not ready to, until I take a walk over there and look at it a little closer, but it's the thirty by hundred twenty-five parcel behind the Impelletteries collapsing building over on Fair Street. It's owned by the village, it's a parallel piece that's like on the same level as the Impel, old Impel property. And then it dives off and that's the Highway Department, so it's part of the Highway Department, really, but they're at two drastically different levels right now, so. Yeah, they can. The Highway Department is not using it for anything, because it goes up and then it's on a little plateau.
Well, what I'd like to see them do, that shows, illustrates the property that is currently owned, is currently under discussion for purchase. What I'd like to see is a rendering of what property they'd like to buy and then where the garage is relative to that property that they would buy.
So you have the rest of this?
Actually, the, the garage is in there somewhere, so they, they don't have, they'll have a view of the river this way, but the garage is.
They look at the roof of the garage, right? They look at the roof of the garage, right?
Actually, it's, they, they're going to look at the back of the garage and the roof. I'd also like to make the sale contingent upon them putting in a sidewalk here. There is no solid sidewalk in front of there. And as you mentioned, we would need, they would need to put in a retaining wall behind, between their property and the village, whatever remains from the Village Garage property.
I assume they're looking to buy the whole Impel garage and all that property as well as our property?
Well, they're, they're looking to buy Impel's site, which is one hundred and twenty-five, wide by a hundred feet deep, and.
And the extra thirty feet of that.
And an additional thirty feet of that. It's zoned I-1, and the minimum lot size for I-1 is a hundred and fifty by a hundred, so it is a non-conforming I-1 parcel plan. I-1, I-1 is identified specifically what can be constructed there and what they are contemplating. They'll need a variance to put in what they want. The I-1, the I-1 code requires a fifty-foot front yard setback.
I think that's five feet, I guess.
Zone I-1 is a hundred and fifty by a hundred?
The minimum lot size for I-1 is a hundred and fifty by a hundred.
So they would have a hundred and twenty-five.
With a fifty-foot, fifty-foot front yard setback, twenty-five side yard setbacks, with a combined fifty-foot side yard setback and a thirty-foot rear yard setback, which means that they have twenty feet in the middle to do something.
Unless they buy our thirty.
There was, there was an offer on this property, you remember, two, maybe remember, two or three years ago, three years ago, where the company from California wanted to put up a model, two model homes there. And so I'm, I'm familiar with the code of lines, it's.
Unless they use the same footprint, then it's grandfathered. If they wanted to use that building footprint and rebuild that structure, then the setbacks, you're not going to have, have variance.
Right, if they want, I would.
I mean, it's, if they could say they were repairing it.
Even if they destroy it, if they still get grandfathered, even if they dose the place?
There's probably a way to do it that, that you can get around that time. Leave up one corner and work around it, bend down.
That's not something that I had considered because of proximity to the road.
Well, if they own this in back there, they could drive around back and park wherever it's, if they want to build a house there.
It doesn't, I-1 doesn't have a multiple structure.
Well, that's what I'm saying, would we have to change the zoning to allow, I mean, a house would be a better fit there anyway.
Well, there is a residence right next door.
Yeah, residences are.
Would we have to change the zoning?
Residences are permitted in I-1.
Oh, they are?
Yes.
So they wouldn't have to change the zoning?
Not for I-1, not for, if they wished.
Do we have any idea what these people want to do with this property?
Yes.
What is it?
Restaurant.
Uh, another one.
So they're going to leave park.
Well, we need to hear how they plan on, what they plan on doing with the building.
Once they propose to, to, once they make a proposal about what they want to do, it immediately goes to the planning board. And then the planning board, they use their site plan and determine what can and can't be done. So the purchase.
Like go to zoning first?
No, they go to the planning board, they go to the planning board first, and then if there are any zoning issues, they go to the zoning. I read through the code doing, similar to.
Have they purchased this property yet, is it?
No, no, they haven't.
So this is all a.
To the best of my knowledge, they have not.
This is all a, we want to look, going to be able to before we put our money down.
Right, so I, I think what we, what we, what we need to see is that site and the purchase, the area that they wish to purchase and how it relates to the Village Garage building. Because this just shows your.
Well, it shows the points of the property.
Well, the river view.
But I mean, I don't know whether the pins are obvious.
They're not near a river, they're, there's.
I mean, there's a pin set here.
For the field trip, we'll go to the river.
The Village Garage building is in here someplace, and I, I think what we want to see is they want thirty feet this way. How close does that come to the Village Garage building?
If we walked around here, we could get into this background.
Yeah, you, I was there yesterday.
That's a pretty good apartment back there. All right.
Field trip, I'm going to take a walk. So I, I think what we, they want to, they want to close on this, but they want us to respond to them quickly. So I think, I, I would think we would, we would need to see a site plan that shows the two properties.
Well, I'm not convinced they can use that building like that. I mean, it's the whole, the building's condemnable.
It's not our problem.
The roof's collapsing.
It's not our problem.
But they want to waste their money, that's.
If, if that's what they wish to do.
While we're at it, in, in case we do decide to do this, we're charging them for it.
Oh, there's a discussion.
That's forty-five hundred square feet.
Yeah, I mean, it's similar to what we're looking at, somebody else was asking, it's going to be market price.
Yes, it's got to be market price.
It's going to be market price.
So our little calculation for stoop sales is not going to.
Yeah, so the one that we looked at, that was a Menge.
Right, and I had a comp on that one. In my email, there was the comparable lot that, that I just told.
Yes, so basically, something similar, we'd have to find out.
Okay, so we need to find out where the, where the property line is.
Communicate that to Jeff tomorrow.
Meanwhile, I'll take a walk. Go visit.
Okay, final approval of minutes, April eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, the Minutes or Trustee Reorg meeting. Motion to accept. On second discussion. All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Right? Anything else from the board?
Oh, yes. Steve, could you tell us how the.
Soundproofing thing?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, I went down there and met with Greg a week before last and.
For the audience's benefit, they might want to know.
So a treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant.
There's been some complaints about sound coming from since we installed the new building.
There's a constant hum that people find disturbing that live upon the hill there. Anybody basically in view of the treatment plant can hear this sound. It's worse in winter, I guess, because there's no leaves on the trees, so probably less. But anyway, so we've decided, I guess, that we're going to alleviate the problem as a village. So I went down there and looked at some, they had some drawings about putting up cinder block walls or building wood and things.
He had gotten an estimate.
He did, in fact, get an estimate, and then I went and looked at it and I realized that Greg's looking into this. You can use the same material that the new building is built out of and just continue it over in front of the noisy thing, all the way over to the bays of the garage, there's two garage bays on the building, and then put a door in that, and it'll be made out of the same sheet metal and be cheaper than putting a cinder block wall in there. We assume, anyway, it'll be better even if it's not, even if it's comparable in price. Because putting a cinder block wall in there is not that, this is not advisable. It looks crappy.
Would it be an operable door?
No, it'd be a fixed wall with doors in it, just like the, you know, right now, there's a door on the right.
A people door, a people door, as opposed to a, a machine door.
And then if you need to go out, they have the two overhead bays, or the two large bays on the end, that they can bring machines in and out. And it would block the sound.
Can, can you come up with a spec that we could put that out for bid?
Yes, well, that's what we're doing now, Greg's, Greg is looking up the manufacturer of the building and I guess there was, he didn't have the best relationship with the contractor that actually built that, but the actual manufacturer of the building is still around, so we'll find out what it would cost for, for that section and a new door, just do it that way.
So right now, Bart's, the engineer, is in discussion with the, I guess, the contractor or, or the manufacturer.
Bart's involved?
Yeah, somehow. So I don't know what the story is.
It's a really simple project.
Yeah, made complicated.
Yeah, it's a sheet metal building.
Thank you for looking into that. I, I would like to report, Brad and I would like to report that the eight trees that were remaining to be planted on Main Street got planted. And hopefully they'll thrive. We're, we're doing little rain dances every day to keep them watered.
Um, there's huge rainfall predicted for Friday.
I know.
Missouri.
We're very happy about that, yes.
How come they didn't put gators in?
The specs, the DOT specs change between two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. The current specs do not require gators. Jen is going to get gators, and she'll get them as quickly as possible. We'll get those installed, I've talked to Charlie. The highway will water once the gators are installed. Jen watered on Monday. They have a very thorough water on Monday. I'll check with her tomorrow, see if we need to water tomorrow or Thursday, and then.
Friday, big rain.
We also replaced the planters down the wooden plant.
Is that right?
Down at the dock.
I didn't notice that.
They're being, they're ready for the Highland, I think it's the Highland Country or Garden Club.
Very nice.
They just completely fell apart when we took them out.
We had a discussion about the clearwater, should I get in touch with the C Street and see if they're playing?
I thought somebody might have said that they contacted us, went up to the office, I heard. I thought I heard that.
I have no clue. I'll get in touch with them.
Anything for the audience? Yes, Frank?
Um, yeah, I'm just, I think you're talking about thirty-seven Main, uh, Fair Street a little while ago. The building appears for sale, and having it for sale, and there's some apparently Village owners and property behind it, part of it or attached. With, I guess, my comment is, a couple aspects to it. One, that, that property is actually, I don't know if it's been discussed and passed or not, but because of its location, it's kind of ideal for a municipal building, halfway between the parking lot and the village hall. And there's very few other locations in the building, I mean, not the entire property, part of it, I don't know, but the location from what you've established, your parking lot, and, and coordination of, presumably still using this village hall, if you need extra space for storage or facilities or activities or meeting space, or I think, I think there's a shortage of space generally in the area. So I just throw that out there, that, you know, you really should think about that property as potentially something the village can use. And I don't know if you've conducted a review of.
You mean a lot, or just to strip it back?
Any part of it?
A lot.
All of it?
The price they were asking was, was way out of anything we could afford to, to look at. It was on the market for a, a lot of money.
Like a million dollars or something?
He was asking a million dollars.
I think, I think the prices have gone down, I'm sure it's come down.
It's in that price range.
Uh, and which is not something, you know, and then we would need to.
Crappy building included.
I'm trying to work it.
Going down, and do, we think, so remediation.
There's been cars sitting out there with the fluids running out of them for the last twenty years too, all those junk cars and everything. That's, they're going to have to do a lot for that property, if they're going to be legit about it. A lot of cleanup.
We had looked at it for a potential site for the fire company about ten years ago and decided that because of the width of Fair Street and the fact that Fair Street is going way northbound on Sundays, that that would not be an ideal place for the fire, for the fire company. We're looking at municipally on parcels for the fire company to relocate, and that was not one of the. Price, we're tearing it down.
If I understand correctly, the village is short on space or space storage.
We have a lot of other property that we could consider that we actually own, we own, you know, the whole club property if we wanted to do something.
The top one?
The top one. The highway garage has, you know, the space there, there's a lot of space that we could consider if we needed this.
I guess the advantage there is it's on the material, it's active between here and the market.
Sorry? I'm sorry, Frank, I, I didn't know.
It's on the material, it's on Fair Street material, Village meeting, it's active between this village property, meeting space, and the parking lot, so it's, it's convenient in that sense, it's more of that.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Bye.